Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 13th, 2025 Melville School District Board of Education. It's great to see all of you here tonight. If we could please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next, I would like to do a roll call. Tori Belkey has an excused absence. I'm Peggy Hassler. Scott Huggerich.
Present.
Patrick McKelvey has an excused absence. Jean Preto.
Here.
And Jeff Woolman.
Present.
If I could please get a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries... 4-0. That's weird. Okay. Next up is Communications. Superintendent update.
Okay. Good evening, Board of Education, community. My name's Dr. Jeff Hogg. I'm the superintendent of schools. And we've started something new this year with, we have so many great kids. We have so many amazing things that happen in the district. And I just want to make sure that we share them and that you guys get to see them. So we generally, we talk about kids. We talk about how amazing our students are. And you know, I could start up here on the screen, but we're going to see a couple of groups of kids later, especially our high school students from Oakville in the Leadership Program. Just had a chance to talk to them for about five minutes up here, and they're just amazing. So when they come to do what, you know, they're going to do and recognize the board during this month, just know that we have some really amazing and really cool kids. So we'll start with this. We have Future Business Leaders of America, Logan, Logan and Ben, all won and advanced, which is amazing. Alex Hottenlips finished fifth in a Wash U Mathematical Excellence Competition. So that is absolutely unbelievable. We have our Chambers Chamber of Commerce Students of the Month, Lindsay and Tanner. Lindsay's from Melville. Tanner's from Oakville. And then we have our South Tech Star Awards, Cadence Cook and Michael Cook from Melville High School. We're both recognized. And then we have our Skills USA District Medalist. So Aiden and Alan both won that, and that's in that networking, Cisco web designing. So we have kids doing things that are really future-thinking, forward-thinking, and going to pay off in life. And it's just amazing what they were able to go do. Zane was awarded the Do the Right Thing, a student at Bernard. And I mean, you can see that up there. It's just, it's really cool. You know, he recognized a problem with his grandmother, called the police, and was able to get her life-saving care that she needed. And then we have our DECA qualifiers from Melville. We have 19 of them. One of them is our other student board member Elliot. So he's there this evening. And then we have District Solo Ensemble Band. So you can just see the numerous students there that we have win awards within this, within that competition. We have our South County Kiwanis terrific kids. So this, this month was Trout Wine. So we have those four guys there. And then Talia Reed won the District Championship. This was our first female wrestler ever in school history to win the District Championship, which was just, it was amazing. It was really cool to see. And then we had five other, well, we had Talia, and then we had four other. We had Olivia Romano, Gacken, Caden, and they were all from Oakville. And then we have Jason Rayburn from Melville. They all competed last weekend and did a really good job representing our district. We not only have great kids, we have great adults. We have great teachers. We have great staff members. And in this case, Sarah Gray, who is in her first year as principal, or Assistant Principal here at Melville High School, won the Chad's Coalition for Mental Health Lighthouse Award. We have our Elementary Choir kicking off, selection of fifth graders from around the district. We had our Legislative Breakfast last week, or a couple of weekends ago, our Advocacy Committee of Board Members put together this really nice panel of our local representatives, our state representatives, and we had high school students, our Oakville Choir kicked it off. They are up there in the top left. And then we had participants from Melville High School. And it was one of those where students could have just come and sat, but they came and they participated. And when they walked out, they were just amazed and impressed. But the cool part is our legislators and representatives were so amazed with our kids and the questions they asked. We have some really, really smart and amazing kids here. And then we took a group, walked down to the Capitol from Woolwind. They got to present on the Prairie Project. So anytime you drive by Woolwind and you see the front, it is, they returned it to the natural prairie. And then we're going to introduce a couple of people. So I'd like to congratulate Dr. Charity Schluter. She's standing, or she's here in front, if you wouldn't mind standing up. We are going to miss Kim Lawson. She is retiring as our Special School District Director, and Charity will be taking her position. And then, well, here, we'll go back here because I do want to introduce two other people. Dr. Jason Lander and Dr. Julie Durham were not here, but last time, they weren't here last time. They were named as new Assistant Superintendents to the district. So if you guys would stand, that'd be great. And then lastly, because I know I've been going on for a little bit here, Adam Smith is an Assistant Superintendent with the District over Student Services. He has been recognized by Special School District with the Distinguished Leadership Award. It's not just an award that they, it's not that they just give it out. It is probably one of their biggest awards. And so for him to be recognized by Special School District, it really means he does some impressive work. So Adam, would you mind standing real quick? And as always, there'll be more to come. Thank you.
Can I say something real quick?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. So I think everybody in the room knows that there was a missing 10-year-old in our community earlier this week, but I think maybe what a lot of people don't know is the extent of what the district did to support the search for this 10-year-old. As I understand it, the 10-year-old went missing in the park behind Oakville Middle School. And as a result of that, St. Louis County Police wanted to have, Oakville Middle School is one of the main headquarters of the search. To support St. Louis County Police, Dr. Hogg, Dr. Chad DeKemper, and I believe Mike Salzman and perhaps others, stayed at the school until the search was called off at approximately 1:17 in the morning. And to top it off, Dr. Hogg was sending emails to the board members and the rest of the school district at 5 o'clock in the morning, updating everybody. So this might be all in an average day's work for our administrators, but I think it was a tremendous effort. Dr. Hogg was literally working on probably about three hours of sleep at best, and I am just so grateful that, that our district went to the extent that we did to help support the search for that child. Thank you.
And I'll add that I know Dr. Brusselsler was there also. So thank you, Jeff. And then one other cool thing is our Transportation Director was locked and loaded to go to the bus stop and search out, went before the child had ended up at home to make sure that he could cover all the bases around the bus stop to, in hopes that he'd come out somewhere. So that's also knowledgeable. So thank you. And thanks, Scott, for saying that. I now would like to announce, we have four Melville School District citizens that have filed for candidacy for two positions on the Melville Board of Education. Both positions are three-year terms. The candidates, as their names will appear on the ballot, and if they're here, if they want to wave, that'd be great, are Megan Polly, Anne Zimfer, Serene Wilkinson, and Mick Johnson. The election will be held on Tuesday, April 8th, 2025. There is more information on the Melville School District website. And there was a forum about two weeks ago that I believe is recorded, and you can find it on the Call Newspapers website if anybody wants to hear the candidates' answers to lots of different questions. So thank you, guys, for running and good luck. Next up is Oakville High School Leadership Program.
Good evening, everyone. We are Leadership Students of Oakville High School. Joining me here tonight is my fellow classmates Blake Halston, Carson Holsey, Avery Burr, Haley Hughes, and I'm Ava Burton, here tonight on behalf of the Melville School District students. We want to take a moment to express our heartfelt appreciation for the school board and all the hard work you do for our community.
Your dedication to us as students and our education truly makes a difference in our lives. Each decision you make is rooted in the best interests of us, the students, and that commitment does not go unnoticed. We know that your roles come with challenges and responsibilities, but you handle them with grace and determination. Your vision for our schools inspire both us, students, and the teachers.
Thank you for the time you spend in meetings and the countless hours you spend planning and making decisions that help shape our learning. We are fortunate to have a school board that not only values our academics, but also prioritizes the emotional and social well-being of us students.
The school board does a great job of keeping the community involved in their decisions and keeping families informed. This school board makes sure that voices of teachers, students, parents, and community members are heard.
On behalf of the students of the Melville School District, we want to express our gratitude for your hard work, dedication, and time you put into our community. We truly appreciate you and want to say thank you for everything that you've done for us.
I also want to tell everybody that they also gave us treats and pretty flowers and decorations. And then we also have cards up here from several elementary schools and the Melville Leadership Club. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Well, as the students say, sometimes this is a thankless job, but it's moments like this where we get to see the kids in action. And I was, Jeff and I were at the State Capitol to see the Woolwind kids on Tuesday, and last night I was at Melville to see the band. And I mean, it's just very rewarding. So while this is a volunteer position, and sometimes it is thankless, this is truly a rewarding month and a position that we all value very much and respect our positions and the fact that we know we're all here to do the right things for the students and our community and our staff. So thank you, guys, all very much. Okay. Next is Beerbomb Elementary. Dr. Paul Morris.
Tonight, I'm not going to do much talking for this part because I want to introduce a couple of our wonderful teachers, Mrs. Michaela Hill and Mrs. Bryn Beechner. There's 539 students at Beerbomb. They're going to tell you about one, one of them, and they're all fantastic, but this one kind of went above and beyond. So I'll turn it over to them.
Good evening, Melville Board of Education. My name is Michaela Hill, and tonight we have the honor to recognize a remarkable student, Smarika Decal, for her outstanding kindness, empathy, and dedication to making a difference in the lives of others. This school year, Smarika has truly gone above and beyond in welcoming a new student to our school who has a limited English vocabulary. With her, with patience and understanding, Smarika has been an incredible leader, helping her new friend navigate the school and communicate with others, and feel included in all the activities. Smarika's thoughtfulness and willingness to step up as a leader are a shining example of the compassion and the teamwork we value here at Beerbomb. Thank you, Smarika, for your kindness, your leadership, and for making our school a better place for everyone.
Okay, congratulations. Next up is Fordor Elementary. Dr. Whitney Moss.
Good evening. I would like to recognize Lacey Ward-McCombe. And Lacey was chosen. She is part of our Sunshine Committee at Fordor, and she has been part of that committee since this committee began a few years ago. She's a true embodiment of our Sunshine Committee, and from its very beginning, she's been a dedicated member, consistently demonstrating a commitment to brightening the lives of others, students, and staff. She's always eager to help our, anyone within our school, and is always the first to volunteer, proactively seeking opportunities to contribute, and asking how she can be of service. Lacey's proactive nature and genuine desire to help have been instrumental in the club's success, making her invaluable and cherished member of our committee and very worthy of this recognition. Congratulations.
I'd also like to mention that we got a fabulous photo from the Sunshine Club thanking us this week for School Board Appreciation Week, so. She's not even listening. All right. Congratulations, Lacey. Okay, next is MNEA Student of the Month Award, Sarah Regan and Cindy Kidwell. Cindy not here, just Sarah.
Hi, I am Sarah Regan, co-president of Melville NEA, and each month we like to take a moment to recognize the achievements of some students from each of the presenting schools tonight. First, we will start off with Fordor Emerson. Determination is more than just a fleeting burst of enthusiasm. It is a steadfast commitment to goals, even in the face of challenges. Emerson embodies this unwavering spirit. He tackles difficult problems with curiosity and perseverance, refusing to be discouraged by setbacks. I've seen him work through complex concepts with patience, striving not just to finish assignments, but to truly master them. However, determination alone isn't enough. It must be paired with self-control, which Emerson excels at. He manages his time effectively, prioritizes his responsibilities, and remains calm and focused under pressure, consistently resisting distractions, and staying true to his commitments. Emerson's self-discipline also shines in his interactions with others. He is respectful, considerate, and contributes positively to the learning environment. He's thoughtful, his thoughtful listening and graceful demeanor make him a valued classmate. These qualities, determination, and self-control are not innate, but habits Emerson has cultivated through hard work and dedication. In a world often focused on instant gratification, he stands as an example of the power of perseverance and discipline. It is with great pride that I congratulate Emerson as Student of the Month. His example inspires us all to strive for similar growth and achievement. Next, I would like to bring up Beerbomb.
Good evening. Tonight, we have the honor of giving the award of Student of the Month to a very special fifth grader, Elham. Elham consistently exemplifies hard work, dedication, and respect, both in and out of the classroom. Elham is an active member of the Yearbook Club, where his creativity and attention to detail play a major role in capturing our school's memories. His involvement in book battle further showcases enthusiasm for learning and his collaborative spirit. Elham is always diligent with his assignments, consistently giving his best effort, and striving for excellence in every task. He listens attentively to his teachers, follows instructions carefully, and actively participates in class discussions. His respect for both adults and peers creates a positive environment for everyone around him. In addition to his excellent work ethic, Elham maintains outstanding attendance, showing his commitment to his dedication and education to the school community. His positive attitude and respectful nature make him a great role model for his classmates. Congratulations, Elham.
Okay. Next, we are going to hear from our student advisors. These two students, one is from Oakville High School, Vedana Korkerik, and Elliot Parai, who is not here tonight because he's at a DECA competition. They both were nominated by their teachers and principals at their high schools to serve as our student reps. So what they do is they come and they report on what's happening in their high schools. So for all of you elementary school kids out there, someday you will maybe want to do this. So Vedana, you want to go?
Things are picking up at Oakville High School. Spring sports have officially started their practices and will start games soon. Be on the lookout for games so that you can attend them. Our wrestling team had a strong showing with some of our wrestlers making it to state, which was a really exciting accomplishment, as Dr. Hogg already mentioned. Student Council is currently planning a blood drive, giving students an opportunity to donate and support those in need. In additional, dual enrollment workshops have been held during A&amp;P to help students explore opportunities for earning college credit while still in high school. Academically, the third quarter wrapped up on March 7th, and students are now shifting their focus toward finishing the year strong. With AP exams, ACTs, and SATs quickly approaching, many students are preparing for their spring tests. At the same time, National Honor Society and the Leadership Program are in the process of selecting students for the next year, providing new opportunities for students to get involved. With March ending, students are looking forward to spring break and preparing for the final stretch of the school year.
Thank you, Vadana. Next, I'm going to direct your attention to the screens in front and back, and we are going to hear from Elliot.
Good evening, Board of Education. In my absence, I've decided to give my remarks through a video presentation. Last week, Melville Theater performed She Kills Monsters, an excellent program that I enjoyed very much. Band and choir competed at Solo and Ensemble Festival and have many students going to compete at state at the zoo in May. Spring sports have begun and are in full swing, including track, tennis, volleyball, and more. And on March 11th, MHS Choirs attended the Large Group Festival and received excellent scores.
All right.
Thank you.
Again, Elliot. Okay. Thank you to both of our students for serving. Next up is Open Period for Patron Comments. We have no one signed up, so we'll move on to Student Achievement, Beerbomb Elementary, Dr. Paul Morris.
I think that's the second year in a row you've almost called me Paul Maris.
Sorry.
It's okay. Good evening. This is always one of my favorite nights of the year because I get to just talk about something so near and dear to my heart, and that is Beerbomb Elementary School. I want to begin just by talking about the culture that everybody who works there, everybody who attends there, has created. So back in December, St. Louis County Library debuted their new Bookmobile. And so they, you know, they visit schools throughout St. Louis County, and this was a special moment for them. And when it came time for them to decide where they wanted to do that, there was no question, they were going to do it at Beerbomb Elementary School. They specifically selected us because, you know, I talk to those folks every time they're there, and they rave about our kids and our teachers. And I think that is a small thread to a bigger story, just around the culture and the climate that we have here at Beerbomb. I think about our staff relationships, you know? Sometimes when I talk about our school and how big it is, I think a lot of folks have a hard time wrapping their head around all of the moving parts. But what we have there is we have this collaborative relationship with all of our teachers. You know, we've got grade level teams of four or five teachers, we've got a reading specialist team of five teachers, we've got five interventionists, we've got four EL teachers. And so to find opportunities for all of those folks to be able to work together is a challenge, and we've created some great systems that allow for that. We've also seen an uptick in parental engagement over the last couple of years, which, those things in tandem have helped us achieve our ultimate goal, and that's just educating all of our kids. You know, I think it's safe to say that our staff love coming to work every day, and that's true of our students, too. We've seen an uptick in attendance over the last couple of years. So that's something that we're really proud of, is that culture that we've created at Beerbomb. When you look at our demographics, so we're sitting at 549 students. I broke that up for you to show the demo, those different demographics, but the one I wanted to highlight there is that special population. And so 77% of our kids meet at least one of those other criteria: free or reduced meals, multilingual learners, or special education. So, you know, when you, when you have all of those different groups working together, it does create a lot of challenges. But like I said, our staff works so well together to meet those needs of those kids, it really is something to watch. As you can see on the graph there, we are slowly trending upward, and I made note of all the adds and drops that we've had over the, since the start of the school year. And so since the start of the school year, we've had three times as many adds as opposed to drops. So we are expecting to continue, that enrollment number to continue to trend upward, hence the reason for all the construction, which I'll talk about in just a moment. This next one here talks about our staff demographics, and I think that first pie chart in the upper left-hand corner is really interesting. So the red, the gold, and the green, all of those represent different slices of somewhere between one to 10 years of experience. And so if you look at that one kind of as a whole, and then that orange slice is 11 to 20 years, and then that teal slice is 20-plus. So we have this really even balance of veteran leadership and fresh ideas, and it's created this really unique working environment for all of our staff. And then the other one I want to highlight there is that final one in the lower right-hand corner. 88% of our staff have gone back and attained degrees beyond a bachelor's, which just shows that commitment to our practice. As we transition to some of our student achievement data, I'll start with our reading data. And what's interesting in our, if you look at our reading data, and if you look at where we were after the winter benchmark, for the last three years in a row, after that winter benchmark, so what we just finished here this past January, we have kind of landed in the same spot after that benchmark for the last three years. But then by the time we get to spring each year, we've shown kind of some incremental progress toward getting every student in that Tier One or that on-grade level. After our last benchmark, so the way iReady works is after you finish the assessment, it will kind of, it'll put each grade level in a quadrant. And what was really neat to see after this last quadrant with our reading scores is five, or four of our five grade levels that tested all ended up in the high-growth, high-proficiency quadrant. We did have one grade level that ended up in high-growth. They are still working towards high proficiency, but when you look at where they landed there, they landed as high on that scale as you could in terms of that high-growth. So we know that if we continue to get that grade level, which was fifth, if we continue to get them to kind of exceed our expectations, we expect that we'll close the gap with fifth grade as well. When we pivot to our reading scores, what's interesting here is kind of a similar story where we've been at a similar spot the last two years with that winter benchmark data. I'm hopeful that by year's end, we'll be a little bit further ahead than where we were at this time last year. So while we were on pace with where we were last year, that is an area where we know that we still have some ground to gain. So even though we ended where we were at this point last winter, our teachers kind of rallied, and we were able to kind of put some things together kind of on a dime just to help close that gap. So within days of that winter benchmark closing, I had already reached out to some of our teachers, and we adjusted some of our, our schedule to see if we could find more opportunities for intervention. That way, we could make sure we could have some more targeted instructional opportunities. But then, also with the support of Dr. Smith and the Curriculum Department, within about a week, we had 63 kids in grades three, four, and five signed up for after-school tutoring, and I had 10 teacher volunteers that were willing to be a part of that. So we did not quite end where we wanted to, not end, we did not land where we wanted to in winter, but as we moved toward the spring, I'm optimistic that we're going to start to close more of those gaps, and the success we'll have in math, I'm hoping, will start to mirror the success that we're having in reading. And all of that just ties into our building improvement goals. We have been heavily focused on our continued implementation of professional learning communities. The work that we're doing in reading and math is very much tied into that work. I referenced that inclusive environment that we have for our students and our staff, and also, we're working to increase that average daily attendance, which I can say, once we got to the end of the year last year, we had made significant gains at that point versus where we were two years ago. When we start to think about what we're excited about in the future, I'll be honest, I'm excited for a little quiet. And what I mean by that is I am looking forward to no longer hearing the sounds of dump trucks, jackhammering, power tools, because we are getting so close to the end of our construction project. I went out to the field the other day and took this picture. I'm to the point now where I walk through there every day. Today, I walk through there twice, because we're at the point in the project now where things are just going up so fast, it doesn't take more than a couple hours, and they've already gone in and just done these incredible things that it's hard to wrap your head around. I got a great lesson the other day from our foreman on how to bend drywall. I'm looking forward to finding an opportunity to do that at my house. And then also, our full-day early childhood pilot. I, you know, I can't say enough about how excited we are about that, because we know the importance of early intervention, and I think that once that program is up and running, the benefit to Beerbomb is just going to be tenfold, so we're excited about that as well. And finally, this is why we do it. Like I said earlier, we've got 549 kids. We love every single one of them, every single one of them. I feel like come to school with a smile on their face, and if they don't, they'll have a smile on their face before they leave, before the end of the day. That's all I have. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Okay. And thank you very much. We love seeing all the tremendous work that you guys are doing, you and your staff, and we like to call them opportunities rather than challenges. But there are, I mean, I love what you've proposed for your plan to get there, and, I mean, to me, you're seeing a ton of success, 92.88% attendance rate, which to the average person might not mean a lot, but that is part of how our district gets scored through the state, so what our attendance is. So all those little things are important. There's lots of questions on E-boards that the board has already asked, and they're answered, if anybody is interested in reading those. But I really can't say enough about your leadership and also your staff, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Even if I do call you Maris, I really didn't. It's just my, it's my, it's my, it's my twang. It's not that I don't know your name is Morris. Okay, next up is Fordor Elementary, Dr. Whitney Moss.
Good evening, everyone. I was so excited that Beerbomb and I got to go on the same evening, because we have a lot of great work going on, and we're always collaborating with each other, so I'm excited to share with you a little bit about Fordor. So some points of pride that we have at Fordor is, one, our community events. We have a very strong PTO that supports our Fordor community, and we like to call it our Fordor family, and we're always looking for events to bring our families in versus just to make money. So an event that we have, and we've had for about four years, is our Fordor Paint Night. Mrs. Conyers is our art teacher there. At the very end, she always likes to do a selfie with the group. We had 180 people in attendance for our paint night, and she led them through a painting project, and it was a fun evening for families to come and just be a family and be together and be with other Fordor families. So it's kind of a tradition that we started at Fordor that's been a real success. And another thing that we have at Fordor is our Falcon of the Month. So each month, we recognize a student from every classroom, and we've also added our specialist acknowledging a child as well. So we have PE, music, art, and library pick somebody K through five to recognize somebody that's shining in their content areas as well. And it is a surprise for our students, so we don't tell them, we do tell their families. It is a family assembly. A lot of our families come and attend, and they love to surprise their child, because their child doesn't know about it until they see them in the room, so that's very exciting. And then we also provide an opportunity for them to take a picture as a family, and that backdrop there, Sword Like a Falcon, is another piece of our art teacher's inspiration. Every child at our school got to make a wing on that piece, and we've had it hanging up all year, and it's kind of gravitated to be our picture opportunity as well. The kids really, really enjoy it and showing off their feathers. So that's another little point of pride for us at Fordor. And taking a look at our demographics at Fordor, we've really, over the past two years, seen a little bit of peak in enrollment. We typically hover around 400 or a little bit below. This school year, we're at 422, and actually, since I sent this in, we're at 425. We have 17 students who are in our early childhood programming and 405 students who are in our K through five programming. Since the beginning of the school year, to give you a little bit of information that Paul had shared, we've added 41 students, and four of them are from the Melville School District, 15 of them are out of district, 10 of them were out of country, and five of them had no prior schooling, being kindergartners but that had not started kindergarten on time. We've had 16 students since after the first day of school leave Fordor. A lot of our students we're seeing that are out of district are coming from St. Louis Public Schools. We are seeing an influx of families from the Nahid Chapman American School, which is their newcomer school within St. Louis Public Schools. So taking a look at our free and reduced lunch, we have 46% at free and reduced lunch rate, 31 multilingual learners, 16 of those students are in our newcomer programming, which is about 13% of that, of our students who are multilingual learners. We have 126 students who receive ML services. Special education is 20% of our population, and 3% of our population is gifted. Taking a look at our staff information, you can kind of see the years in education is in blue, and the years in Melville is in red. So our biggest population at Fordor is our 16-plus years. We also then do have an influx in that six to 10, and then a little bit of variation in those other categories. A lot of our teachers' years in Melville mirror their years in education, so you can kind of see that as well. 94% of our staff have beyond a bachelor's degree, so we do have two staff members, that blue slice there, that only have a bachelor. So of all of our staff members, all but two have above that master's degree, 94% of them. So taking a look at our iReady benchmark, and as I was listening to Paul, we have a lot of the same mirroring of patterns of progress over the past few years as well. When it comes to reading, we were excited, I looked at that same quadrant of growth, all of our grade levels in reading were in the high-growth category, but not all of them were in the high-performance yet. So we did have all in high-growth. We're working on moving second and third grade into high-performance as well. We did also have the opportunity to start tutoring as well at Fordor with the support from Dr. Smith in the curriculum office. We have that targeted right now in third through fifth grade, particularly targeting third grade, because as you'll see in our data, they are a little bit lower than our fourth and fifth in our academic achievement data there. So taking a look at our math results, all but third grade, as I had mentioned, were in the high-growth category, and third grade was really hovering the borderline of hitting that high-growth. Grades one and four were in the high-growth and high-performance category, so we were excited to see that as well. Our school improvement goals, we're working on attendance as well, we're right about 93% attendance for our daily attendance rate, and also increasing our scores when it comes to iReady and MAP in reading and math. This year in science, we've really partnered with looking at our skills by grade level. The science math, the science map test covers three, four, and fifth grade standards. So how do we spiral those skills? That's been a big focus within our school improvement plan for fifth grade. That emotional regulation and sense of belonging, my counselor and my academic interventionist that primarily focuses on SCL intervention go weekly into all of our classrooms, teaching classroom lessons, using variety of materials to address the current needs that are going on social-emotionally at Fordor. We also have groups that they meet with as well and individuals as needed. And then continuing to implement that professional learning communities with all we do as well. Our teams this year focused on academic team, behavior team, and school community team, and we really tried to think, streamlining our teams to have better streamlined focus. So our academic team is looking at our school-wide academic data, and how do we support our students within Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three? Behavior team is looking at that social-emotional, that sense of belonging piece, and how we support our students there. And our community team is working on our engagement within the community. So some things coming up at Fordor, we have our Breakfast with Books event that's going to be coming up here in April. It has been a huge hit and a very favorite for our families, because they simply come and eat breakfast with their child. They get to read with their child, they get a donut, and they get free books. It works really well for families that need to go to work as well, because you might be able to go before work and then still go to work and have an opportunity to be with your child. So that's a very high-attended event. We also have some musicals coming up at Fordor that we are excited about, and as I'm sure most of you know, third through fourth, third, fourth, and fifth grade at Fordor Elementary do have the opportunity to play strings during the school day, so we will have a strings concert coming up for those children as well. Career Day is an opportunity that our community team that I mentioned prepares for our school, and throughout the entire day, they get to see different career opportunities that they could potentially have in the future. We end our school year with the Fordor Block Party, that is, this is the picture you see there, is just a big community event. We give away helmets to our students at that time, because we also encourage them to bring their bikes and scooters, but we want them to wear a helmet doing so. So that is a big piece of it. We're still working on helmet donations, so if you have any connections there. And we have Kona Ice and a lot of different events, and they bring their dinner. It's just a big end-of-the-year celebration for our families and very well-attended. So I'd like to thank you for letting me share a little bit about Fordor this evening. So I'd like to thank you for letting me share a little bit about Fordor this evening.
And the same goes for Fordor. I mean, we love seeing the success and all the opportunities that you, that you are presented to. Lots and lots of questions on e-boards that you brought up and opened a little bit here tonight. But, you know, for the community's understanding, to understand the, we'll call it opportunities instead of challenges, but the amount of transient students that both Birbaum and Fordor and Beasley and Berkeley get of students that aren't, they haven't started their education in Melville. So a lot of times, we have to bring those kids up to grade level or, what word do you guys use? I forgot.
Yes, like grade level expectations.
Yes, yes. So that's just success. I mean, that's how we have to measure the success of most of your students. And so we appreciate all of this information and how much you guys do with, I mean, you have limited resources to deal with the diversity that your schools have. So we appreciate all the hard work of your team, you and your team and your leadership. It's very great. So thank you.
I believe your ADA was really good, too.
Yeah, it was, not to be higher than Mr. Maris.
We like a little friendly competition among schools.
93 something, was it? 93 point, almost 94, yeah, yeah, which is
Excellent.
unique, given the
We're always working on it.
Yeah.
Always has room to grow, that's for sure.
And we also always have to remember about the third graders and fourth graders and what, really all elementary schools, what they've gone through with COVID, right? That we're still rebounding from that terrible word. So, all right, well, thank you very kindly.
Thank you.
And please thank your staff. Okay. Next is six governance, budget development, Marshall Crutcher, our CFO.
Good evening, Board of Education. I'm Marshall Crutcher, Chief Financial Officer, and I am presenting on the preliminary revenue budget tonight. I'm going to talk really this, summarize the highlights of the agenda write-up, which really supports all of the schedules that were posted to e-boards. So we'll hit the high points and see what kind of questions there are. But I think that really the theme of the budget this year is really uncertainty. We've got a preliminary budget of $168 million of revenue. The preliminary budget increase would be around 4 tenths of 1% compared to 2.9% inflation. So you can tell it's, it's not going up much. Over 80% of our revenue comes from really just three revenue sources. The local tax, the formula, classroom trust, and then the sales tax. So that's really what I'm going to talk briefly about tonight is those, those three revenue streams and just hitting the high points there. So first of all, with our local taxes, that's our largest revenue source. It's over 60% of our total revenue budget. And the first thing is about the tax is it's a reassessment year. So we're going to get new values. And those values won't be finalized until September, when we then have the tax rate hearing. There's three real impact points, revenue impact points, that you really need to just keep in your mind about the local taxes. So first of all, one of the biggest items is the Senate Bill 190 about the real estate tax freeze. We don't have data yet from the county to know what that impact is going to be. So I'm budgeting a zero growth on the residential assessed values. Our residential assessed values are 71% of our total assessed value. So for us, it's a significant piece of all of our value. I would suspect that sometime, you know, we should have it sometime this summer to then make a budget adjustment. But the budget is going to be conservative with, you know, initially budgeting a 0% growth. So I know 100% of the real estate will not be frozen. So we should have a positive adjustment out of that. Just don't know how much. The other item, the second item to keep in mind is, this is upcoming year, FY '26. This will be our last year of revenue from Prop A unless that gets renewed somehow. So we just need to be mindful, that's $825,000 of revenue that has a future uncertainty. The final item is really our tax collection percentage. Last year in FY '24, we had lower, a lower percentage of collections than historical rates. So that caused a negative budget adjustment. The budget going into next year will be around 96.72%, which is about halfway between the traditional percentages that we collected, 97.13%, versus the FY '24 percentage of 96.26%. So it's about halfway. And the thinking there is, is that, once again, it's an estimate. So if we get back to traditional percentages, we would have about a half a million dollar favorable adjustment. If we're still down at the FY '24 percentages, it'd be about a half a million dollar unfavorable adjustment. So those are very important to keep mindful of and how that could potentially impact the FY '26 budget. Quick note on tax rates. It's always a discussion point throughout the community. There's, there's some good write-up in the agenda about, there's, we have four actual tax rates. And those are tax rates for residential, commercial, agriculture, and personal property. Those are actual tax rates. And it's important to know that you can have zero change to those four actual tax rates, but yet your blended tax rate can change slightly. And that's because the blended tax rate is an average. It's not an actual tax rate. It's an average. And it's a weighted average. So if you have no changes to the tax rate of those four asset classes, but your assessed values may go up for one class or down for one class, it changes that weighted average and it changes that blended tax rate slightly. It doesn't change it by much, but it changes it by hundreds of a cent. So it's just important to know if somebody asks the question, hey, I didn't think we changed our tax rate, but our blended tax rate changed. Well, that's why. We didn't really change the tax rate. It's just a weighted average. And then finally, just be mindful of the benchmarks, knowing that our current year tax rate ranks 17th out of 22nd. Once again, our residential assessed values are 71% of our total district. And the projected amount of revenue per one cent of tax levy is about, is expected to be around $253,000 this next year. And that's an estimate, but it's close. Moving on, the second item is the state formula slash classroom trust. They split the total formula among those two revenue line items. But I look at that as a total. That revenue represents over 12% of our total budget. There's a lot of factors that goes into this calculation. There's at least 11 factors. And it makes it a little bit easier for the state to play a shell game with those kinds of, of things. It's important to look at four key factors, really about, I think, five key factors on the formula revenue as we go into the next year's budget. First of all, the SAT, the State Adequacy Target. Last fall, DESI was projecting using, this year, we use a reimbursement of $6,760 per student. Last fall, DESI was projecting bumping that up to $7,145 for next year, FY '26. That would have been a $4.1 million revenue increase. So now they are projecting the SAT will be the same as it is this year, it's $6,760. And there may be future updates because it's sort of changing and evolving through the spring. But that's the most recent update that I have. So that's $4.1 million less revenue than what I thought we were going to have as of last fall in the projections. The second item is the thresholds. So that's a positive note. The thresholds for FY '25 for limited English proficiency and free and reduced lunch, those are more favorable. So in other words, we get to capture more students for free and reduced lunch and more students for LEP because there's minimum thresholds that are reduced. So we get to count more of those students. That increases our WADA, increases revenue. That's about a $1.9 million favorable impact to help offset that 4.1 million. The, the next item is, it's a new factor in the calculation, weighted average membership. It's called WAM for short, W-A-M. That's the new thing where you get 10%. In the past, all, 100% of the formula was attendance-based. Now, 10% will be membership-based and 90% will be attendance-based. So what that really means is they're letting you count those students at 100% attendance because it's, you know, it's just the member. So that will give a $500,000 favorable impact to the budget as well. So that also helps chip away at the 4.1 million dollar loss. The third and final factor that's favorable is, once again, yet a new factor in the calculation coming up this year is a 1% reimbursement of prior year payments. So next year, they'll look at our fiscal year 25 payments and we get 1% of that. So that adds about $200,000 into the revenue to, once again, help offset the 4.1 million. So when you net those four factors, three of them favorable, one of them unfavorable, we're down about $1.5 million from where I thought we were going to be as of last fall. The biggest thing on the formula, though, is really looking at, looking at estimates versus actuals for attendance. So when we look at FY '25 revenue, we get to choose this year's revenue based on the most favorable WADA of this year, last year, FY '24, or FY '23. We just talked a few minutes ago about the favorable thresholds that are available this year. Because of that, we want to use FY '25 WADA as our basis for revenue this year. So this is the first year that we have ever estimated the current year to be the basis of the current year revenue. We've always used the WADA from a year or two ago for the current year revenue for formula. But this is the first year that we're using the current year. So what does that mean? Well, we don't know what our attendance is until the year ends, so we're estimating that. I've estimated an attendance of 91.5%, which is conservative. Over the last five years, we averaged 91.76%. Last year, we were at 91.98%. My budget estimate is 91.5%. Want to be conservative. So if you get to the end of the year, you know, DESI is going to look at the actual attendance. And based on the actual versus what I've estimated for this current year's revenue, they'll true that up. That true up will hit next year in FY '26. I think the worst-case basis would be a $1.65 million unfavorable adjustment. I think the best case might be a $2 million favorable. But more realistically, it's probably going to be somewhere in between. So that's important to understand that whatever the actual variance is from this estimate will hit as a true up in fiscal year '26. Now, we're budgeting fiscal year '26. So what are we going to do for fiscal year '26? We get the option of using FY '26 WADA or FY '25 WADA or FY '24 WADA. We're going to use FY '25 WADA as our budget. Well, we don't know FY '25 WADA yet. So we're going to use the same estimate for the FY '26 budget that we just used this year for this year's revenue. So whatever variance we have this year, it's going to be a double impact to FY '26. So you can take that because in FY '26, you're going to get that variance as a true up of FY '25 and you're also going to get a budget '26 adjustment. So you can take that 1.65 million unfavorable, multiply it by two. You can take that $2 million favorable, multiply that by two, or anywhere in between. So we have a wide range of potential variance. I'm hoping that it will be positive, favorable, because our attendance is budgeted conservatively. We're using 91.5% as the estimate. And our average was 91.76 and last year was 91.98. So hopefully, we'll have a positive budget adjustment next year from all of this. But it is uncertain. Then the final thing is on sales tax. Just noting that this year's reimbursement is $1,513 per WADA. Next year, DESI is right now saying that it's going to be $1,495 going down. But the reason it's going down is, remember, we had those favorable thresholds, which adds to the WADA. And that's the other part of the sales tax calculation. They look at prior year WADA times the reimbursement rate. So the budget really goes up about 1% on the estimate, even though the reimbursement rate goes down because the WADA went up. So those are really the highlights of those three key revenues that make up over 80% of our total budget at this point. What questions might you have?
So once the final state budget, which I don't think that's due till like May 9th or something, I guess then we'll have better forecasts for our own budget when we know exactly what they're going to put into the state budget in terms of finding, or funding House Bill 727 versus the formula.
So that will be almost no impact to our budget. Because the one thing that it will benefit will be if we know what the SAT is. Maybe they choose to have a higher SAT than $6,760. But we're not going to know our attendance by then. That's what drives that, you know, $1.6 million unfavorable or $2 million favorable. That has nothing to do with the state budget. That's our attendance. And then the local taxes have nothing to do with the state budget. That's going to be the real estate tax freeze. So, so when we get to May and they finalize the state budget, it can help maybe with a tweak to SAT. It can help with a tweak to sales tax. But that's really not going to have much impact. And S, and the Senate Bill 727 is largely irrelevant to us because that's about minimum salaries. And we are well above the minimum salary requirements. We could literally, you know, we're not going to do this, but if we froze salaries for six years, we would still probably be over the minimum required salary. So that's mainly more for rural districts that tend to have lower salaries. So 727 will be of almost really no impact to us.
Well, but the concern, I believe, is that they will be fund, that the state will have to fund 727.
Yes.
And they will take away from the SAT
And that's where it gets questioned.
in order to fund 727.
Exactly.
And so the school districts like us that are at the right level of pay for our teachers are going to lose because those funds are, they're going to have to, they've promised to fund that. And at least for this year, they think that they will probably, what we learned Tuesday, was they will probably fund both this year to hold steady on their promises. But then the next year, we really have, we may really lose on the SAT.
Yeah, the first thing they have to do is fill that $300 million gap that they have, that they asked for with DESI. And then the governor said, no, I think we're going to hold that back for now. And I know that the state budget, they just passed their supplemental literally today and sent it off to the governor. So they have to start redoubling efforts when they get back from spring break to start getting those nailed down. But on the Senate side, I know when the budget goes over there, they've said they want to close that $300 million gap so they can get SATs up.
Well, Peggy, great point. And that's why I factored in to the budget an SAT of no growth.
Zero growth.
Because, and I think that's why in the fall, they had a $7,145 SAT and they reduced it back down to $6,760 for what you just said, Peggy. They've got to have a way of They've got to have a way of funding 727.
Right.
And so that's why we're now budgeting that lower SAT, because they're using the money that would have gone for SAT to fund 727.
Yeah, they keep saying that anybody who's trying to be non-conservative in their budget estimates, they're going to get a rude awakening by the time they get through, about halfway through their budget.
Yeah, and that's why I wanted to, you know, make sure that you knew that we're conservatively budgeting the SAT, we're conservatively budgeting the attendance percentage, we're conservatively budgeting the property tax freeze at 0% growth. So hopefully, the budget that we'll be presenting, hopefully, next year, we'll end up with some favorable adjustments. But that's different from what Peggy said, in the fact that even though we'd have favorable adjustments, the real picture is, we would have more money if we had 7,145 SAT, but we're not getting that, most likely, because they're having to fund the 727 bill.
Right.
It's going to be backwards if that actually closes the gap, because we can't count on it. And since we're so heavily local tax-funded, changing around some of the state formulas isn't as much for us as it is for other districts. But the problem is, there's cuts in general revenue that they're talking about with House Bill 594, taking the capital gains tax away, which is a $390-something million hit to general revenue. And then, with the one I think that's going to be a problem for us is House Bill 903, where they're going to change the assessment percentage of personal property over a three-year period from 33% to 18%, and it's being touted as a, it's not a tax decrease. But unless my math's really bad, if you take what you're taking a percentage of and not changing it, but you change the percentage, the amount of money you get out of it is still going to be decreasing. So it's a creative way to say, yeah, we're reducing your taxes, but we're really doing a reduction of your funding at the same time.
Right, and I was, there was a, there was a regional meeting with CFOs in the last few months, and there was a, there was a, you know, representative from state government, and they were talking about the formula, and they made the comment that, you know, because the SAT is not going up, that people are saying they're not funding, you know, the state's not funding education, but they are because of the whole 727 funding and everything. So there's that kind of talk coming out from some parts of the state government. But the reality is, funding 727 doesn't do anything for our district.
No, it's shifting money around.
It's shifting, it helps the rural districts get their teacher pay salaries up, but it doesn't help districts like us, because we don't get any extra SAT.
And, you know, the fact that 903 is done, and they have other ones in the pipeline as well to start playing around with property tax percentages, if we don't make two or three adjustments in our budget by the time we get to about March, I'll be surprised. But I think you're doing the right thing with being conservative. I would rather start from an assumption of zero growth and go upwards with adjustments than go backwards, because that's a lot more painful of a way to do it.
Yeah, definitely.
Do the personal income tax cuts that are going to be phased in through 2027, how much does that affect our, not same thing?
I mean, I don't know down to the dollar, but, you know, we just know that, once again, when the state has less revenue.
Right.
From lower income tax, there's going to be less revenue to distribute to this, you know, to the budget.
Right.
And when they start playing around with general revenue drops, and they have to fund something of 727, it's more, let's shift the money around and make it fit somewhere.
Yeah, but anyway, we very much appreciate all this work that you put into this, because it's very complex, and obviously, a very liquid situation. There's, it's sort of head spinning, actually, when you look at all the different variables that have to go into planning our budget. So we appreciate it. I think it's only going to get more difficult as we struggle through the next few years with changes in the state and federal funding, too.
This is historically uncertain, just very uncertain times, and, you know, the state long-term outlook is, they're negative on that, and the property tax is very uncertain.
Long-term, it's like the day after tomorrow?
Well, you know, I think our, you know, we'll see the total budget coming together, and I think we're, we're in a strong position right now, and you're going to see, you know, expect to have breakeven operating budgets for FY '26, and my hope is for FY '27. And we're going to have some decent money coming into capital for FY '26 and FY '27. And then, once you get to FY '28, it becomes much more uncertain. We'll just have to see what happens.
And I'm so grateful for the conservative approach that our finance committee has always taken, particularly over the last year, 18 months. And I really think that it, and, you know, with your guidance and their approach to how we handle our taxpayers' money, I think it's really going to keep us from putting our neck on the line during this tumultuous time that we're approaching here. And I'm very grateful for that, and I hope everyone realizes that we have actually taken a very conservative approach with our, with our funds.
And I think one of the biggest examples, a district should be so proud of what they've done with HVAC, to have been able to have replaced that many millions of dollars and not incur $1 of interest expense. It's extremely prudent for the taxpayers.
Could you say that a little bit louder, in case I didn't? Well, and also, and we'll conclude with this, but to thank our community for passing Prop E, because we, because of Prop E, we are not bound by House Bill 727 to bring our salaries up. I mean, some of these poor districts that have to bring their, I mean, thank goodness for teachers, that they're raising their pay. That's totally what I would want to happen, but some of these districts were at like 30, and now they have to come up to.
Or less.
Yeah, and they have to come up to 40, you know, throughout the entire pay schedule. And then in '28, '29, they have to continue to increase their base by CPI. And so, thank goodness that we are already in a good position to not have to be mandated by those rules of the state.
We cannot thank the community enough for Prop R, Prop A, Prop S, Prop E.
You did good.
It has really helped the district tremendously. Tremendous support.
Yes, so anyway, thank you very, very much.
I mean, this is the sixth budget I've been, you know, part of. I think the first one was the only normal one out of it, because the next three were packed with COVID money, and then the fourth one was the tail end of the COVID money. And then we've got this, where we're starting out from essentially assuming no growth on SAT and hoping it goes upwards, so.
I learned.
You make it interesting, Marshall, there's not a question.
I learned, there is no normal year in education.
I was going to say, the only reason he thought it was normal, he didn't know what he was looking at his first year.
Exactly, yeah, first year, I had no idea what I was doing for budget. Now I know enough to know that, ooh, this is going to get interesting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marshall.
Thank you, Marshall. Okay, next up is Strategic Plan Update, '26 through, 2026 through 2031. Jessica Papillo and Dr. Brian Smith.
No, they're falling off like flies.
You hadn't said anything yet, so, not like we can blame you.
Please join us on April 3rd at Bernard Middle School for our first meeting of the Strategic Plan Steering Committee. Good evening, Board of Education. I'm Jessica Papillo, Director of Communication.
And I'm Brian Smith, Assistant Superintendent, Teacher in Learning. I will, I will jump in. We appreciate the opportunity tonight to give you some updates with regards to our forthcoming strategic plan, which is scheduled to begin during the 2026, 2027 school year. You can see on the slides, both at your computers and on the screen for the audience, we have taken steps already to begin that process. The green checkmarks, you will see those as we continue to provide you updates. So at this point in time, we have created the committee. We have, obviously, sought your approval to be able to continue to move forward. We also have a number of administrative facilitators who have volunteered their time to be able to support our team, to be able to facilitate the conversation that's going to have to take place over the course of several months. And we outline these pieces in the next slide or so. You can see our big one, which Ms. Papillo plugged very nicely, is 6:30 PM on April the 3rd at Bernard Middle School. That will be our first community meeting and our overall focus groups. Our goal for that is to be able to see what the data says, and I'll highlight that here in just a moment. During the summer, our team will draft an initial plan for what the strategic plan will look like, and we will begin to prepare some community presentations, so that our community has a full understanding of exactly what the data has said and the direction that our committee is, is looking forward to being able to go. Laying out the next several months, you can see, the fall through next springtime, roughly a year from now, we will be requesting your approval to approve that strategic plan from the years 2026 through 2031. And between now and then, you can see we will continue to have meetings. We are taking a new approach this particular time by having individual themed meetings, so that way we can dig much deeper into the individual pieces, as opposed to trying to tackle several of them all at once. And you can see, later in the fall, we will revise, and probably revise again, because we want to ensure that we get this correct, because our community, we owe that to them. So again, as I said before, the new strategic plan would be represented in the '26, '27 school year. And we do, as you can see based upon the slide, we do have 132 people who have expressed interest, and that does include various members of our community. And most importantly, we do have all of our schools from John Kerry element, early childhood all the way through our high schools are represented in that process.
So a few weeks ago, we opened up our big survey for our strategic plan. The big question we asked was, as we plan for the future, what key opportunities, resources, and experiences should Melville School District offer to support student success? This survey is still open. I encourage everyone in our community to follow that link. It's on our website. I know that link on this slide doesn't quite work in this format, but if you go to melvilleschooldistrict.com, you'll find the strategic plan survey on that website. These data points are about a week and a half old. They're as of March 5th, and we have seen more participants. We're over 700, with over 700 thoughts and 29,980 ratings. So people have been going through and reading thoughts of other people, and as they rate those, they rise to the top. So I'm looking forward to sharing this survey information in depth with that Strategic Planning Steering Committee on April 3rd, to get their feedback and thoughts on that. When we look at what some of the thoughts are that are rising to the top, they're centered around retaining quality teachers. A lot of thoughts around valuing the teachers in our school and realizing the important role that they play in educating our students. So there's a lot of concern about remaining competitive in pay. There are a lot of other thoughts, those are just kind of the top dominant ones. We're hearing about class sizes, we're hearing about academic interventions, career prep, student opportunities that run the gamut, from what's happening in their classrooms to what's offered after school. Mental health support, safety, all of those issues are rising in this thought exchange. So our first committee meeting, as we mentioned, was April 3rd, and we'll provide an overview there of the planning process. We'll review these thought exchange results in depth, and then we'll have facilitators working with their tables to work together to identify some key themes and discuss what strategies might fall under those. So our goal is to leave that meeting with some top themes, to then plan some follow-up meetings in the fall around each of those themes, to let our community know where we're at, where our opportunities are, and where there's room for growth in the future, to help guide that plan. Me and 6:30 to 8:00 at Bernard Middle Cafe, and everyone is welcome, whether they signed up for the Strategic Steering Committee or not. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very, yeah, thanks so much for all the work involved in this. I want to reiterate to the community that this is your strategic plan, and so we hope that you will turn out and tell us what you want to see, because you guys, the entire community, or they all have a stake in this district succeeding, and so we would like their input on that. So thank you very much.
Yeah, and the choice of doing theme nights, I think, is a really good one, because I think it will get you some, people that'll do some deep dives on what they want and give you some focus on that, rather than one where it's general purpose, where you could have a whole bunch of conversations going on that go wide but not deep. And this is where we need some deep people talking on this.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to mid-year academic benchmarks data report. I will just let you introduce your staff.
Yeah, that would be, that would be great, and that's all I'm going to do here. I have the privilege to work with our curriculum directors. Those that will be presenting tonight include Sarah Herman, who's our Director of Social Studies, Michelle Neese, who's our Director of Math, Gregory Zika, who's our Director of Science, and Amanda Zink, who is our Director of English Language Arts. We do have English and math data, more thorough data analysis in terms of the winter benchmark information to prepare, and we do also have some social studies and some science information for you as well. So I will turn it over to them.
Good evening. I'm Amanda Zink, and I, as Brian mentioned, am the Director of English Language Arts. And we are here to talk about our benchmark data, our mid-year benchmark data. The purpose of benchmarking, which we do three times per year for all students in English and math, is not just to track year-to-year data, but to track growth within the year, and really to come up with some actionable data for our teachers to direct their instruction and to prepare for those end-of-year state assessments. This first slide that we're looking at here shows our schools, our elementary schools, and their high-growth, high-performance quadrant for this fall, which is great. All of our students fell into high-growth and high-performance. Another celebration with that is that last year, our median percent progress towards annual growth at the mid-year was 77%, and this year it was 82%. So we increased by 5% over the past year. So this slide is going to look at how our overall performance in elementary reading compares to the national performance and the statewide performance. And as you can see, we have outperformed both the national and state levels in our reading data. This is the similar information, only split up by grade level. So in addition to our overall district outperforming state and national averages, we also perform, outperform them at every single grade level in reading. In case you're wondering why we don't have anything for kindergarten, we didn't give the mid-year assessment this year in kindergarten. Our kindergarten students take a lot of assessments, so they were doing the beginning of the year, the end of the year benchmark assessment. This is the same information for 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade, again, outperforming state and national performance on every grade level. This is a big-picture look at our growth from fall to winter this year. 22% more of our students placed, changed their grade placement into grade level or above from the beginning of the year. And here is a breakdown of our winter-to-winter performance by grade level. So we're seeing a lot of incremental growth over three years in the various grade levels. The one area of opportunity, I'm going to use your word "opportunity" there, is in first grade, where we've seen some pretty flat data. We have adopted, as I'm sure you know, a brand-new curriculum this year and a new resource called Amplify CKLA, and we are transitioning to structured literacy. And one of the focuses of structured literacy program is explicit and systematic foundational reading structure from K through 2. And so that is going to be our focus. That's our opportunity to grow those younger grades to support reading comprehension throughout school. Our domain-level performance is compared to the national performance as well, so this is by grade level as well as across our domains. And we see strong performance, outperforming the national performance in every domain. The one spot where we're seeing a slightly lower performance is second-grade high-frequency words. So that does mark a shift in our instruction, away from kind of rote memorization of high-frequency words towards phonics and decoding. Most high-frequency words are, in fact, decodable, and so that should address that as we go on through our program. And as you can see, by 3rd grade, 96% of our students have mastered high-frequency words, so. Looking at our secondary data, this is a combination of, in some grade levels, of I-Ready and STAR, because our students take I-Ready K through 5, and then they switch to the STAR reading diagnostic in 6th grade. So our overall data, we can see three years' worth of strong, consistent improvement in overall reading comprehension at the secondary level. By grade level, our current 6th grade students, this is a cohort data group, we can see that in 4th and 5th grade, they took the I-Ready assessment, and they were pretty flat in 4th and 5th grade, but then we see them coming into 6th grade in a pretty significant jump in. jump in growth in overall reading comprehension. Seventh grade, again, I-ready for their fifth-grade data, and then in sixth and seventh grade, they took the STAR test, and again, some steady growth there and a nice improvement in overall reading comprehension. Same thing in eighth grade. They took STAR all three years for this data, steady, strong growth, as well as ninth grade, 10th grade. So our takeaways and action steps for ELA. We noted on the data that the high-frequency words did dip a little bit in grades 1 and 2, but the action step is to continue to focus on phonics and decoding rather than rote memorization. That is what aligns with that structured literacy, science of reading-based approach to instruction. Our first through fifth grade showed good growth in vocabulary and comprehension, which really aligns well to our Tier 1 background knowledge, our core instruction background knowledge and direct vocabulary instruction focus with our new curriculum. Our fifth-grade Tier 1 data really points to a need for a school-specific deeper dive into class-level analysis of baseline placement performance, so looking at where kids started from the beginning of the year to where they are now and how that may be impacted by where, what level of performance they were at the beginning of the year. Our secondary ELA data, grades 6 through 10, have, as I showed, continued a multi-year trend of really strong growth in overall comprehension. So we are going to continue to emphasize that direct vocabulary instruction, explicit writing practice, and rigorous text selection. And we're also focusing on the moving our bubble students, those students who are in that close-to-proficient range on the state assessment and the basic level, and moving them into the proficient range. We're doing that through our collaborative teaming process. So as part of that, at the beginning of the year, we review MAP and EOC data, and those teams are going to continue their collaborative focus on priority learning standards, which is what is assessed on the test in the EOC. We've also added the use of testlets, which have been provided by the state, and basically testlets are mini-MAP tests. And so they can drill in on select group of standards, priority standards, the same standards that are assessed on the MAP test, and they can do this on the DRC platform, which is the same platform they take the MAP test on. So double whammy there of getting the good data for teachers to guide instruction, then also having students to practice on the actual platform. We also are going to focus on using that Tier 1, that core curriculum as outlined with fidelity, and analyzing baseline placement data with principals and collaborative teams.
I'm Michelle Neese. I'm the Director of Mathematics, and thank you for this opportunity to share with you our math benchmark data this year. So as Amanda shared, benchmark, we do three times a year, and this is for kindergarten just twice this year, but for first grade through Algebra 1, we are doing this three times, and that's helping us to be able to measure what that overall growth is more incrementally, that our teachers have actionable data to compare alongside with that end-of-the-year test that they take too, and then marry it with their unit assessments and making sure that our students have the learning that they need to be successful. So the first graph that I'm sharing is similar to Amanda, and actually Dr. Moss and Dr. Morris referenced this as part of the data piece. This is a four-quadrant grid that shows across the bottom line is that student achievement. So that x-axis being the math director, I'm going to use these terminologies some here too, but still going across there, that's the achievement level that our students have. So when you're looking at the performance, when you go up that vertical axis, the y-axis there, that's talking about the growth. And one of the things that we have conversations around with teachers and our administrators frequently is that growth has to happen before achievement occurs, and then we have to keep that going concurrently. And that's helping us to close those gaps or grow those students more, and we want to have at least that year's growth because we're here a year and continuing with that and closing that gap. So in looking at these graphs, when we're noticing our school's placement in here, primarily we are in that upper-right quadrant for all of our schools. I am really proud of the work our teachers and the learning our students have had in comparison with the last few years. We have continued to move to that upper-right quadrant in looking at this piece of data from the growth and achievement aspect. The next slide that we're going to discuss is our comparison to the national and state performance for the I-ready. And again, this is for grades 1 through 8th grade in our district. They don't put Algebra 1 or 9th-grade high school students doing it because students take Algebra 1 at different times in high school in comparison, so there's not a norming situation. So 1st through 8th grade. What you're going to notice in this, again, is the whole district composite. We are outperforming at the national and the state of Missouri. And then again, we have this here, the similar set of data by grade level. And again, for every grade level is that achievement we are outperforming at the national and at the state performance level. So there's our grades 3, 4, and 5, and again, for grades 6, 7, and 8. Moving from there, this is that overall achievement placement from fall to winter, so that's that criterion reference of how we are growing towards grade-level achievement. And again, some significant improvement overall for the district. And then when we take that information and we're breaking it down from winter to winter in comparison by grade levels, what we're seeing is that we are having growth over the comparison of the last two years for every grade level and increasing this. This is a similar graphic. There is a composite here with this of the winter-to-winter. This is the first year that we are doing I-ready at the secondary level with this measurement. IXL was the previous measure that they used at the secondary level. So when you look at this, the first, the two previous years are from IXL, and then we're moving to the I-ready benchmark for this year. And again, you can see that same growth aspect across the achievement levels for our students. This graph right here is that breakdown of that placement level, trying to see our percent shifts in growth across changing those tiers. We have a few areas where we're not above that national norm, and those have been into some specific driving, looking at buildings and with our teachers' instructions and partnering with our schools on where we can help to increase those performance levels in that growth to change that achievement. And this one is again comparing to that national norm, but by domain, seeing that specific change and shift that we had. You're going to notice that we have two areas that are below the national norm just slightly, and with those, again, there's some specific conversations. We continue to work on talking about how we are spiraling our content with our students as part of our math instructional model, trying to help support that we keep that on-level or actually above those national averages in the achievement. So action steps continuing on here, there's continuous work around the MAP where we reference those item analysis within our collaborative teams, using the item specifications from the state that help us to define what's the depth of knowledge and what is the actual understanding that our students need, talking about how we're bringing that rigor in and through spiral assessments and questioning. As Amanda had also mentioned, the testlets are available this year from DESI, and so those have been something that we have immediately brought out to our teams to be able to look at, for students to have that opportunity to show achievement. It's also a learning opportunity for our teachers to really help understand what does this look like and making sure that, ensure our students are achieving at the grade-level standards. When we take our MAP test, we don't ever get to see the questions. So having an opportunity to really see from the state, this is a great opportunity in utilizing those as an analysis. The benchmark, same thing, having the conversations around these reports, helping to support unit planning, whether that's through interventions as well as the Tier 1. Looking at that standards mastery opportunity, there's some additional assessments for growth, continuous conversations with administrators and teams. We have after-school monthly PD sessions that occur for our teachers across the district. We are doing model lessons, myself and our coaches throughout the classrooms. This is through K through high school. Assessment writing sessions, continuing to do learning walks, the opportunity to learn from one another with both teachers and our administrators, and the continuous communication on some email touchpoints about some of our best practices and where are we on pacing and communication with that. Thank you for the time this evening.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education. I'm Gregor Zika, the K-12 Science Director. While social studies and science lack those nationally-norm benchmarks that Amanda and Michelle just went through, we have focused on leveraging our existing data to drive improvements in student learning. In our elementary and middle schools, we've utilized 5th and 8th-grade MAP test data to identify areas of instructional focus. Through the use of those professional learning communities you've heard so much about, we have addressed targeted standards where we saw a need for additional support. Teachers have also created Common Formative Assessments and used those and administered those DESI-provided testlets, as you've heard them talk about, to monitor student progress and inform our instruction. This has resulted in a focused approach to spiraling content and reviewing key concepts before the MAP test. Through data analysis, teams identified a need to improve constructive response writing and have implemented the Claim Evidence Reasoning, or CERs, to address this need in 5th and 8th grades. As we move into high school, this data-driven approach is continuing with high school biology. Teams have analyzed the EOC data, the end-of-course exam, and the 8th-grade MAP life science data from the year before to understand past trends and incoming student readiness. This allowed teams to identify areas for instructional focus in those biology standards. Biology teams then use the PLC process to address these targeted standards. Teachers focused on one or two key standards per unit, tracking that data through Common Formative Assessments. This student data allowed the teachers to utilize the academic and intervention times to reinforce concepts with targeted groups of students. This holistic approach to looking at previous and current data to drive instruction in those PLC processes are providing some great discussions for our teachers moving forward, and I really feel like they're, they're making some great progress. So thank you for your time.
I'm Sarah Herman, the Social Studies Director. Throughout this school year, government teachers have consistently analyzed the 2024 EOC data, identifying trends that have driven PLC discussions. This data-informed approach continues as teachers select one to two priority standards per unit and use EOC results to reflect on prior instruction and determine current instructional needs. Before winter break, the government teachers had the opportunity to reflect and prepare. They reviewed fall semester instruction, utilizing Common Formative Assessments to identify topics and standards that needed continued learning in addition to prioritizing standards and topics that still needed to be taught this spring semester. Using the EOC data, teachers also recognize, like Greg had mentioned, the importance of strengthening students' constructive response skills, which is a key component of the EOC. Both high schools have implemented strategies to address this. To ensure purposeful and productive EOC review, students will participate in a practice government EOC. The resulting data will allow teachers to identify specific areas requiring reinforcement and develop intentionally planned review lessons. Thank you.
So on behalf of our curriculum directors, I'd like to thank you for the time to be able to present to you this evening. It gives you an idea of where we have been and where we're trying to be able to go.
Yes, and thank you to all of you, your department. This is the most data we've ever seen, I think, in the years that I've been on the board. Lots of questions asked and answered on eboards, so thank you for that. And also to the community and anybody that's going, I couldn't really read that. The presentation is on the agenda, and it's a lot of good information, but I think I'm going to go home, not tonight, but tomorrow or Sunday, Monday, Saturday, whenever, and watch the video again of you guys. I try to do that and, and follow along again because it helps me learn. So thank you very much for all of that, and I highly recommend to the community that they consider looking at your presentation to see all the good work you're doing. So thank you.
The expanded level data is fantastic. The content-level specific percentages, that is exactly what we need to try and figure out where we have these gaps and, and areas that we need to concentrate on. And that data, please, more of it all the time. It's fantastic to see it, and the breakdowns where you can track some of the cohorting is also really appreciated. So yeah, this data presentation is fantastic. We would love to continue getting this level of data, especially with the state and national norms thrown into it. So it's a great comparison piece to see where we stand, especially since the state wants to change MAP testing to do grade-level equivalency. This gets us ahead of the game so we know where we're going and where we need to concentrate on. So bravo on that. And also the fact that we're using Amplify, since there's now, I think, three bills in the House trying to get rid of 3Qing, the fact that we're using Amplify now, we're ahead of the game. And when it was being discussed in committee about removing it, at least one of the representatives got very possessive because obviously she's an English teacher, Representative Steinmetz, and she wanted to keep it in, as something as an option, but there was a lot of discussion about why we don't need to go keep 3Qing going. So I'm glad we're ahead of the curve on data analysis and ahead of the curve on where we're going with curriculum.
All right.
Can I just say something real quick? You guys are aware, I'm sure, of the overwhelming gratitude that the community had when we announced our positive academic results from last year. And it's great to see this continuing. It's great to see the reporting. It's great to see, for you to make us aware as well as the rest of the community that you're sticking with it. It's really, really appreciated. Everything you're doing is completely in alignment with what the community wants. So we really appreciate that.
Thank you. You can plan. We will continue to have further data updates for you through the benchmarks and through MAP and EOC scores. We will continue to have those opportunities for you. Again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next is advocacy update, which we've gotten most of it embedded in the meeting already.
Yeah, there's been a lot of it that sort of popped in and out.
We don't have to repeat ourselves.
Well, the first thing I want to say is I want to tee off of what Dr. Hogg said about the advocacy breakfast. That was Jean's work, and she did a lot of hard work on it and led a lot of people getting that together. So Jean, thank you very much for it. It was fantastic.
You're welcome.
And as Peggy said, we were in Jeff City for Advocacy Day for MSBA on Tuesday, and the Woolwind thing that had it, they had out for Prairie Grass was fantastic. There were a lot of people that came by and were like, "What is that about?" And the fact that we had two of our state reps, Representative Burton and Representative Murphy, spend, you know, not just a quick walk-by and continue on, they were engaged, they were talking with the kids, and the fact that actually Representative Murphy took four of the kids down to the actual House chamber and got an official picture taken, that was really a fantastic move that he did. So I'm glad that they were there. They were the only elementary school that was there, and they did a great job for being, you know, out of their normal element. But on the advocacy side of things, there's a lot that happened in just the last week. There's a lot that happened in the last couple of weeks. There was a definite push to get things done, at least to get bills across the other side of the aisle by the time we were done with spring break. And one of those bills that made it across the aisle unfortunately is Open Enrollment. It tells Bill 711. It's essentially a light version of the Senate bill because it gives us the ability to opt out. It has quotas on what are allowed, percent, maximum percentages for students coming in and out, but there's also bills affecting property tax, like I mentioned before, which was House Bill 903. There's a bill called House Bill 607 that started as just a teacher salary adjustment related to Senate Bill 727, but then had other items attached to it, which was like the grade-level equivalency for MAP testing and some other things. But they made an interesting comment about it that the only items that got added to it were the only things that got voted out of committee with one or zero no votes. It was basically equivalent of everybody said this was a good piece of legislation. So there's a lot that went on. They got the supplemental budget completed because they really needed to get that done. That was one. That was $1.9 billion. They had a graft on our current budget because there were gaps in what we needed. They're going to start working on the House budget very, very aggressively when they come back from spring break, and I think the last half of the year is going to be very interesting in the legislature because there's going to be a lot they want to get done before the end of session.
All right, thank you, Jeff. Next is 7, action items by consent, A through I. Does anyone need to pull anything?
No.
Okay, if I could please get a motion, a, ugh, motion to approve, action items by consent, A through I.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. All right, if I could ask you to put us into closed, Jean?
Motion to enter a closed session meeting for the purpose of reading minutes of previous meetings and corrections and approval of same and other items under the Missouri Revised Statute 610.021, subsections 1 through 21, and Statute 610.022, subsections 1 through 6, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting particular employees, Statute 610.021.3, preparation for negotiations with employee groups, Statute 610.021.9, and individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees, or applications for employment, Statute 610.021.13, legal action causes of action or litigation, Statute 610.021.1, records protected from disclosure by law, Statute 610.021.14.
Okay, Scott?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peggy, yes. And I apologize, I breezed right over open period for patron comments, but we don't have anyone signed up, so that is taken care of. If I could please get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. All right, thank you, everybody.